Okay, we are going to begin our meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you and welcome everyone calling our meeting to order for our roll tonight. We have Mrs. Grimm is out. She has a work obligation, so we'll miss her this evening. And quickly announcing an executive session that took place following the last board meeting to discuss personnel. We also had one just prior to this meeting and we've were a little bit late getting in, so we do apologize for that. Moving on to public comment, is there anyone in the room who wishes to make a public comment? It's on any agenda item. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to the most important part of the night, the swim team recognition. Dr. Finnerty.
Yes, thank you. This evening I'd like to ask Steve Onspak, our Director of Athletics and Co-Curricular Activities, to come to the podium with some special guests.
All right, we got a very exciting night to recognize four of our student athletes from our swimming team today. They accomplished some great things this season. We also have an accomplishment that happened in the fall, which we're also going to highlight. But before we do that, I'm going to bring up our coaches, head coach Coach Deal and assistant coach Coach Hughes, to say a few words of our outstanding students and their accomplishments this season.
Thank you guys for recognizing our swimmers. This season really has been a season to remember. They've really done some amazing things, especially these four ladies that came tonight. Throughout this season, these girls helped us lead our girls' team to five wins, which is the most wins that I'm aware of since I've been coached for nine years. It's also the most wins I know of since I was a high school swimmer, swimming against Pottsgrove and cheering on my friends who swam for Pottsgrove. As a relay team, these girls broke all three of our team's records, which was actually pretty amazing, two of the records. Rather than just saying they broke them, we could say they crushed the records, which we didn't really see coming quite in the fashion that they did. But it was really pretty impressive, especially since one of the names they were replacing from that record board was a former district record holder and state runner-up. These girls swam well enough at the District One Championship meet to move on to the state championship, which is also very impressive, especially because the District One Championship meet is one of the toughest meets in the entire state. So they were able to move on to states, which was the first time we got swimmers to states in the past, I think, four years. And I think it was just a great experience for all of them. So thank you guys very much for recognizing them. All right, we have Bailey Richards. Kennedy Crock. Elsa Lucas. And Colby Richards.
Thank you, coaches. And as Elsa's up here too, I do want to recognize her. She was a two-time state qualifier this year in cross-country and in swimming. So congratulations, Elsa, and obviously to Bailey, Colby, and Kennedy. Congratulations.
Thanks so much, and thank you for sharing your victories here with us. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to another most important part of the night, the April Student Board Report.
Well, apparently I have to use paper because my laptop, if you haven't heard, is MIA. So if anyone sees it, please let me know. I don't know where it is. So thanks to whoever, to Ms. Frye for putting this out, because I'd be in trouble without it. Okay, anyway. Okay, hello, everybody. I hope you all had a good spring break. I feel like it's still spring break because it's very nice outside. I wish I was outside all day today, but I wasn't. Tonight I'll be speaking about some sports extracurriculars that are happening throughout the district. So the middle school started their spring sports season, like they've been practicing for a while, but they first started up games like last week. And they've had many victories so far. They had opening games for lacrosse and track last week and found success. The track team had a meet against PV here last week and they won. And then the girls' lacrosse team played Pottstown today and they won as well. And then the track team also had a meet today, which I don't know how that went, because it was probably happening a few hours ago. But I know they're finding success. As for the high school, the spring sports have been in full swing with more and more practices getting harder and games ramping up. The high school track team was supposed to have their home meet a few weeks ago, but the weather didn't cooperate, so they finally had their meet later in the week after all the rain finally subsided. The Unified Track Team also has their home meet tomorrow. No, not tomorrow, Thursday. It's our senior night, so if anybody, if everyone wants to come out and support the Unified Track Seniors, that'd be really great. We're racing against Pottstown and PV. Onto extracurriculars, the Avidum Club is planning out some great events for the school community as we wind the year down. It headed to Keystone and AP testing. We're hosting a talk workshop this Friday, April 12th, as our first one ever. We are excited for the opportunity to host an event to support other schools in their foundation of an Avidum Club, which supports students and their mental health within their peers. Yeah, so stay tuned for more information on that when that goes. Hopefully it's very successful. We have a meeting tomorrow, which we're going to go over all the basics for that. And I'm hoping that it's a really good event, because it's supposed to be really good. We're inviting seven different schools from across Montgomery County to come out and just learn about Avidum, if they don't have an Avidum Club, if they want to learn what it's about, they can come if they have a club. So we're super excited to host our first one. Falcon Friends also has a fun event planned at the end of the year, so they're doing the Falcon Flood Frenzy again, which if people are aware of what that is, basically last year, they had students donate, I think, $5 to get us to get out of seventh period in order to raise money for Special Olympics. So all that money that they raised went to not only our Special Olympics teams, but Special Olympics Pennsylvania, so all the money that we raised goes to that. So we're doing that again this year. I think that's May 10th or around there, because we have to switch the date up because of the senior class trip. The last senior class trip is May 10th. We're going to Six Flags, which is super exciting. Super excited for that. And then the last thing is prom's approaching fast, and with that comes post-prom. I already said this a different week, but you can still sign up for post-prom. So signups for this are actually now free, so anybody that went to prom or didn't go to prom, if you're a junior or senior, can sign up. And any underclassmen that are also attending prom can also sign up. The deadline to sign up is this Friday, though, so make sure you sign up before this Friday. If you need to sign up, see Ms. Reinhardt for more information or end to get the QR code to sign up. And that's all for me. Sorry. There's not that much left, but you got it.
Girl, you had the whole itinerary. I haven't looked at one.
You got it, you got it.
I'm trying to think about what I could say now. We had our cheer banquet. That was very nice. For the Avidum thing on Friday, we also have the cheerleaders welcoming the students from their schools, so there's that. Field days are coming up and high school volunteers help with that, such as Key Club and Student Council. The honor roll breakfast for the high school is on April 25th to celebrate students and their academic success. And then I have boring dates for you all. So I have the middle school art show is on April 24th. The middle school and high school orchestra concert is on April 24th at 7:00. The Ringing Rocks Art Show is on April 25th at 6:00. The middle school band concert is on April 29th at 7:00. The high school band concert is on April 30th at 7:00. And the middle school chorus concert is on May 2nd at 7:00 p.m. And she basically gave all my fun things, so that's all I have for you, is really fun dates.
Thank you very much for your report. Does anyone have any questions before we move on? Okay. I hate to not introduce it as another most important part of the night, but we have the report of the superintendent.
Okay. I'm a hold loose. Just a couple of things for me tonight. First, we had a wonderful experience with the eclipse. I was lucky enough to be at Ringing Rocks and we had the entirety of Ringing Rocks out on the recess playground, and we saw a whole lot of nothing until a magical 10 minutes. And I can report from, this is a report filed by the district office, that they could hear the kids screaming in excitement all the way from Ringing Rocks. It was really a wonderful experience, and I was very happy and proud to share it among them. So that was fantastic. The other thing that, on Friday, we had a wonderful event that I was also very happy to be with right across the hall. I was invited to our Ringing Rocks Bingo Party, which was fantastic. We have some, an excellent bingo caller in Mrs. Stelp, very well attended and very enjoyable. And the last thing I have is less enjoyable. This is our last meeting with Deb Clayhold as our business administrator. She will be moving on. I want to thank her in particular for her work with the CEP program that brought free lunch to all of our students and honestly has also more than paid for itself. Also her work in developing some transparency and additional reports for the finance and for starting our process as we transition to ERP. Deb has been nothing but classy as she moves out of the district into another district and really supporting our process and the transition. So I want to thank you and wish you all the best.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working for Pottsgrove School District, and it's been a real pleasure working for the board. This is a fabulous board. I can't commend you enough for how much effort you put into this and each and every one of you. I've been on a board myself. I served on a board many years ago for a four-year term, and I can say that not everybody puts forth the effort being on that board, seeing, you know, what happens. And each and every one of you really cares and really puts forth the effort, and it's been a pleasure serving for you.
Before we move on, does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, so I, yep, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that Deb agreed to meet as many times as I needed to learn and answer all my questions about the budget. And I was just really grateful, and I thought that was awesome, so.
I also wanted to thank you for answering all of my questions. I greatly appreciate it, as well as just the number of hours you put in on the budget outside of typical work hours, weekends, nights. It just really spoke volumes, and it meant a great deal to, obviously to us, but also to our community. Thanks is not enough, but it's just so very appreciated. And again, thanks for just answering that multitude of questions. Greatly, greatly appreciated.
You're all welcome. And anything I can do in the transition, I'm more than happy to help out. Any phone calls or anything you need, so just please reach out. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, we are moving on to seven, approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 12th, 2024 Board Minutes as submitted.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve 7.1. Any questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 7.2.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the March 26th, 2024 Board Minutes as submitted.
Motion and a second to approve 7.2. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Eight, receiving of accounts for audit.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the high school, middle school, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve 8.1. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to 9.1.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of invoices in the amount of $2,542,288.05 from March 13th, 2024 through April 2024 as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve 9.1. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to 10.1, the treasurer's report.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the treasurer's report for March 2024 and file it for audit.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's report. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Action items, personnel.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 11.1.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Maybe an explanation.
Sure, go ahead.
11.1 is the appointment of Mr. David Lucabeche as our business administrator. David is here. If you'd be so kind to stand up and wave hi. Did I say your name correctly? Close enough. David was the successful candidate through our interview process. He brings to Pottsgrove 20-plus years of experience in the finance world. This will be his first placement with a school district, but we, throughout the interview process, we really believe we found a gem and are very excited to bring him onboard.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Welcome. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Moving on to 11.2.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 11.2 through 11.5.
Thanks. We have a motion and a second to approve 11.2 through 11.5. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I see that Mr. Bailey is retiring. And he was just an amazing math teacher. He worked wonders for both of my kids. And he continued to just kind of be like, I don't know, he was just, he was just always so happy to see everybody. Just, you know, they'd see them outside of school at a game or something, and he was just, you know, he was just thrilled to see the students. And, you know, combine that with being a math teacher that made math math, you know, for those that maybe needed a little extra help or something. It's going to be a loss, but I know he deserves some time off. So I wish him the best.
Okay, are there others? Right, hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to action items, business, 12.1.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proposed final budget for the 2024-2025 school year in the amount of $74,893,350.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I believe Mrs. Clayhold is going to brief us on our presentation of how this number was arrived. Thanks.
Go back one. I think you flipped two. Yeah, there you go. So this is a schedule that I showed two weeks ago at our last meeting. This just shows in the first column, if we would raise taxes to the Act One Index, which is 7.1, we could potentially have about $3,035,000 in real estate tax increase. What we're proposing this evening is, if you move across the line, is a 2.1% increase in taxes. And what that does is adds $897,764,000 in additional real estate income in this year's, in the 24-25 budget. I want to call attention to the very last column, which is again the 1%. So for every 1% increase in the millage rate, it gives the district approximately $427,537 in tax revenue. This last slide is the same slide that I showed two weeks ago. The only thing that has changed from two weeks ago on this is we received three more additional retirements of school teachers. In the first one, last week, two weeks ago, we had incorporated four retirements. This one includes all seven retirements of the teachers. There's approximately, what it does to the revenue schedule here is it changes a little bit of what we're going to get back from PISers and our social security that we get from the state, because that's at 50%. So the revenue has changed slightly from last week. So we're projecting the $73,994,806 in revenues for the district. As you can see, while we can move on to the details on the next page, same schedules as I showed two weeks ago, we have showing $49,556,791. Now, these schedules don't include the increase. The increase that you see there on the first line for current real estate revenue, that is just due to housing starts or potential increases to assessed value. So what we did is we took the assessed values as of February 1st, our latest data, and took at times the current millage rate, and that's the number there. So that is the increase just due to the increased assessed values only. Next slide is the state revenues and variances here. As I stated last time, the increase that PASBO and DASBO is suggesting we put in for our basic ed subsidy from the state should be flat, because they're not really sure whether the new basic ed formula is going to pass legislation. So they recommend that we just stay flat from what we received in this year, the 23-24 year. That is an increase of $602,000 from the previous budget year. Major, other major changes, retirement subsidy from two weeks ago, again, that went down a little bit, and the social security went down a little bit, because when you take out expense for those retirements, you have to take out their portion, that 50% of it from the revenue that we're not going to get back from the state. So it reduced it slightly. Next slide is the federal revenue and variances. And the big decrease here is the 1.6, almost 1.6 million in SER funding that is going away in the 24-25 school year. Everything else is staying pretty much, pretty much flat for federal funding, that what we're used to. Next slide is our expenditures. The only thing that changed from two weeks ago on this schedule is the reduction of salaries and, that's it, just the reduction of salaries. The benefits stayed the same. We assume that, you know, the new hires coming on would have the same benefits as the current teachers. So there are three more additional retirements in here, which reduced our salary budget. But as you can see, just to remind you that year over year, our salaries are going to go up about 3% each year, three and a half if you consider benefits with that. We already talked about last week, the major increase to other purchase services, which is, that is our special education and charter schools and so forth. So everything remained the same. The next slide is a new slide. And this slide just shows total revenues less total expenditures, where we're showing the deficit of $898,544. And with a 2.1% increase, we would be able to cover that deficit. And the next slide is just the same slide that was the first slide that I showed you, just to bring it back into perspective of how much an increase in taxes would be. So about the $898,000, we're looking at about 2.1% increase. And the final slide is just the history of the index and what our tax increase has been, the history. Any questions? I know Montgomery County business administrators put together a spreadsheet early on today and asked each one if they could kind of give us what their proposed tax increases were going to be. 11 out of the 21 school districts responded so far to that. We're looking at most of them, the highest of 5.3% increase I'm seeing so far. All of them are in the 5% or high 4%. Any questions?
Did you need to use any fund balance, or is this a balanced budget?
No, basically balanced. It's like, it's less than $1,000 that we would use for fund balance if we hit everything dead-on with revenue and expenditures. There is no fund balance. I know earlier this evening in operations, I know when we talked about the 22-23 year, we did have a surplus of about $2.6 million. Also, we're projecting, you know, an increase this year if we go back to the one previous slide where I show a forecast. We're actually forecasting like $2.3 million possible excess in this year. I do believe those are, we should use that excess to fund our capital expenditures, like one-time spending. And how that's going to help us is, I was looking at this new capital project that we want to do at the middle school. So if we take the 2.6 and possibly the 2.3, you know, we're going to have somewhere in the range of $5 million in those two years that we could transfer. That $5 million would really help us from going out for another bond issue. Because when you look at the bond schedules, we, our next bond that goes away, that is going to be fully paid for, is going to be at the end of 2028. So if we want to continue, if the board wants to continue doing the building renovations that the Schrader Group has laid out for us, which is, you know, over a 10-year period, almost $60 million that needs to be done to our buildings, a good thing to do is when you have this excess, this one-time money, to do is when you have this excess, this one-time money, to transfer that to capital, and then that way, that's keeping down your, your bond issuance cost year over year. If, if the buildings needed to be repaired, like when we went out and did the bond issue for West this fall, that added about, in current years, it, it changes. There's a schedule of how much we pay back, but in the most recent years of payment, that's about five hundred thousand dollars per year. So, if we go out for a bond issue and add five hundred thousand dollars before twenty-twenty-eight, when that bond issue goes away, if it's structured somewhat the same, we're looking at a little bit over one percent increase just to cover a bond issuance. That's why I think it's good for the community to know that when we have these excess funds, that it's good to transfer that money to capital to spend for our capital projects. The same way with the twenty-four, twenty-five year, we're only putting in basic ed funding of, of flat, what we received this year. If the state, and that's a big if, if the state does approve their new funding formula, then we could potentially get about two-point-one million dollars more this year, but we don't know that, because we have to pass a budget before the state passes their budget. So, we don't know about that. So, if by chance we would have excess money in twenty-four, twenty-five, again, that money, all that excess money can be used for our capital, and that really keeps the tax, tax rate down moving forward with all this building construction that we need to do.
So, can, can you contextualize this for our, our community? So, based on a median price value of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars housing, we'd be looking at a annual cost of, increase of about a hundred and one dollars, or about eight dollars and forty cents a month, is that?
Yep, yes.
Okay.
Yep, a hundred and one dollars. The next slide, Chrissy, the next slide does show the millage impact, oh, next one, one more. It's kind of small, but if you look at that, it does show that two-point-one percent increase on an average homeowner's assessed value of a hundred and twenty thousand would be a hundred and one dollars a year increase.
What is our capital reserve at now? Is it four or five million?
It's somewhere right in around there. We have to keep, remember, we're going to get our rebate back from the West project, so we have to spend. We didn't borrow all of the money. That project came in at about eleven-point-four million, and we borrowed ten, so we have like one-point-four million that, that's going to be over that, which we have to make sure we have money in the capital fund for that until we get our, our refund back from the GISA project of about one-point-five million.
The other thought I had was during operations earlier tonight, we talked about the application for that, for the grant, for the three, three and a half million for the projects, and how we would, part of that, being accepted for that, is to contribute twenty-five percent, which would be that seven-fifty plus.
The two million, yeah.
To a million, and just to ensure that we have enough in there to do both of those things. So, that's good for us to know.
Yeah, that, that is good, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, good information. Yeah, there is about five million. And what I'll do is I'll lay out for you, I do have a schedule, I don't have it with me tonight, but it does show, because I show you those projects, like every month, you have a listing of all the projects that you have approved through the capital. So, I can project for you and have it for you to show at next operations meeting, I'll do that. That'll show where we think it's going to be. So, I'm going to take the fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty-three, and then take every project, you know, the cost that was removed from there, and then what remaining that we have approved. So, you have a total picture of how much we expect to have there when all those approved projects are done. And then if you decide to transfer, you know, money from the general fund over, you can make a decision, you know, to do that, to move that two-point-six that was left over from twenty-two, twenty-three, plus at the end of this year, move whatever excess is over into the capital fund. And that, that sets you up in a really good position to work on the middle school project, the next middle school project, without going out for, for another bond issue. It kind of delays that.
I appreciate that, because one thing that we, that none of us wish to do is to find ourselves in a need where we have to raise taxes to such a large degree. We want to be good stewards of the dollars and make these incremental increases to be able to support these projects and deliver the strongest education for our students and the best work environment for our staff, and also balance that with the residents, many of whom do not have children in our district. And it's a very delicate balance, and I, I feel good about this budget, and I appreciate your preparations and, and your stewardship too of the dollars. Really appreciate it. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? You're very welcome. Thanks. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Moving on to twelve-point-two, budget transfers.
Make a motion that we approve the budget transfers for March twenty-twenty-four as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget transfers. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to twelve-three.
Make a motion that we approve the Pots Grove Resolution for the fair funding of public schools.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve twelve-point-three. Are there any questions or any discussion anyone wants to offer? Dr. Nippert?
Yeah, I just want to be very brief. We've talked about this before, but basically, we are, several of the school districts in Montgomery County have already passed versions of this resolution, Norristown, Pottstown, and three or four others, and the number has probably changed. This is a result of the constant, of the Supreme Court ruling that the funding for schools in Pennsylvania, public schools in Pennsylvania was inadequate. Just to be very brief, there's a shortfall in how much funding the state should be providing in terms of its requirements for providing an adequate education. And the state had to do an estimate of what it would cost, and the estimate of what the cost would be is five-point-two billion dollars. That's a lot of money. And I want to make a quick point tonight, because my first point is this, that didn't happen overnight. This is a result of decades of underfunding. And briefly, here's, here's the point. This funding has been going on, and I've cited the example several times, for at least fifty years. That goes on before you were born. The timeframe we're looking at for funding the schools is not the usual timeframe of one year. If you go to the, the committee that looks at Finance Committee, you would find that we have a ten-year plan. And that's a good horizon to look at for problems that have gone on for decades. Ten-year, think about the situation ten years from now. Ten years from now, most of the school board will be different than the members currently on. Okay? You, most of our students will be different. You won't be students anymore. You might be, I don't know what the future holds, you might be parents of students. Maybe, maybe not. But here's the situation, we have to focus not just about our current students, who we are interested in and we have great concern for, but also for the students ten years from now, who aren't born yet. And we have to focus not just on you, but the future as well. And that's not what's happened for at least fifty years. And I cited the first time, I talked about this when I graduated back in nineteen sixty... We need to focus on the longer term of ten years out. And so, that's what this proposal is about, because this is not Republican or Democrat. This is a program that's gone on for fifty years, during which time both parties have controlled this legislature, and both parties have controlled the governor's chair. So, this is not a partisan problem. This is a problem that requires our immediate action. It's not going to affect this year's budget, but we've got to do something so it will affect the future budgets. And that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nippert. Are there other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to twelve-point-four.
I'd like to make, make a motion that we approve twelve-point-four through twelve-point-six.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve twelve-point-four through twelve-point-six. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's pass. Moving on to thirteen-point-one, approval of policies.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, I know there's a list of them here, approval of the following policy as submitted, policy zero-zero-eight civility, policy two-four-nine bullying slash cyberbullying, policy eight, eight fifteen-point-one acceptable use of computers, network, internet, electronic communications and information's policy.
Second.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, I have a few questions about a couple of the policies, if I can get clarification. Normally, I attend the policy meetings, but I believe I missed these because I was at a conference. But I had a question about the policy zero-zero-point-eight civility. Under authority, it says, it's the district's position that rude, abusive, or intolerant behavior, and it goes on. Later in some of the other documents, they specify what those words mean, but the word rude seems very like subjective, and it's not clarified as what exactly is considered, someone would consider rude. And because of that, there's, it's very vague, there's a chance that it could be abused from different administrators or, or not even anyone here, if it's kept like this, you know, maybe further down the line. When it comes to things like that, a word that's very vague, how do we usually handle those situations?
So, I guess is the, the question I have is clarity on how we would handle, like, the civility as practice?
Well, some of the terminology, when it's vague like that, it, it allows for almost interpretation that could be almost taken advantage of by, I guess, maybe dishonest people or something like that. So, is it supposed to be vague like that for a reason, using the word and not having it defined?
One of the things we talked about is the definition of rude is going to change.
Right.
Over time. And the other thing is, none of us could define it. I mean, I don't, I can't tell you what, if somebody says something rude, I can usually go, oh, that was rude. Not always. It has to be vague, because it's, you know, it's that or don't have a civility policy, and that seems worse to me.
I would just note that this is in part aspirational, and any enforcement of any of our policies would be subject to the parameters of applicable law, including the First Amendment, as it would apply to a particular context.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's see, I also had a question about, in, when it talks about the establishing the procedures, is it, the process of that, the superintendent establishes the procedures, then brings it to be voted on, or, and then it's put into the policy, or?
No. So, the, the policy defines the board's vision for the district, and then administrative regs usually interpret those, those board policies, and they are not brought to the board. They are, I mean, administrative reg, a good example of that is like the Student Handbook, that's essentially an administrative reg. So, we draft, our internal team, our district office team drafts administrative regs on how we practice the vision that's being expressed by the board. Does that make sense?
Yes, yeah, it does. Thank you for clarifying that for me. I actually also, sorry, had another question about the bullying policy two-fourty-nine. I wasn't sure about the wording when, under definition for bullying, and it says, I just was hoping you could clarify, it says verbal or physical act or act, series of acts. Further down, when we talk about the criteria, it says it is repeated, it's carried out repeatedly over time. I was, I guess, in my mind, it seemed like contradicting, because it says verbal or physical act, as in one singular act, like it happened once, but then further down, it almost seems like it has to be carried out repeatedly, so done multiple times over time. So, I was just curious if you can clarify that for me.
So, from a practical standpoint, whether it's a first time that something happens or something that's repeated happening, it still would be a violation of our code of conduct, and it would still, there would still be disciplinary consequences.
The different levels.
Correct. Bullying is, is, is the pervasive piece, and, and whether it's bullying or just like a physical altogether, like, we, we'd still invest heavily in support for students and also for disciplinary consequences. So, practically, there's, there's not much of a difference, like, we're, we're going to pursue it vigorously.
Based on those levels anyway.
Yeah. When, when, when students get older, and certainly in the adult life, the harassment piece, the repetitive pervasive, that kind of stuff actually does have a legal definition, and that, I think, is reflected in here. Much, much of this language is actually PSBA language that we have, that they run by their lawyers, and that we've kind of adapted to our district. Does that make sense?
Okay, yes, it does.
Yeah, the, the committee, among other things, also decided that hopefully there will never be a second offense, but you have to account for it.
Right. And I...
Actually, it's just one of, one of the things I would like to add about that is, because you're saying about a, a single act, but then also pervasive. Sometimes a single act can cause repeated offenses, in the sense of if someone, you know, makes a, a post on social media, even though it's only one act, it's out there forever, and it's repeated. Or if somebody prints up a poster, and it's only one act, but again, it causes repeated, you know, bullying or cyberbullying, depending on the application of the media, so.
Okay, great, thank you so much. And I was just wondering, when it says, which occurs in a school setting or outside of school setting, further down, I know it, it defines the school setting, what did it, what does it mean by outside of school setting?
So, I, you know, so I go home and, and after school hours, I start bullying.
Right.
I just do, like, cyberbul...
Right.
That also would be subject to parameters established by the courts as far as when conduct occurs outside of, outside of school means not on school property, not, you have authority over students from portal to portal, from the time they leave to go to school until the time they... the time they arrive home.
Okay.
This does apply and can apply outside of that time, but only if it has a substantial disruption to the operation of our educational program or impact on our educational program.
Okay, so that if it happens outside of school, but it kind of carries over within the school setting.
Has a direct impact on the school setting.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you for those questions, Annie. I appreciate those questions. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the report of the JOC meeting.
I have a handout here I'm passing around. The JOC met last night, Monday, April 8th at 5:00, and it was a Zoom meeting. The first and probably the largest item on the agenda was the proposed budget for 2425, which is the handout that I gave you. I am recommending that we invite the administrative director, Dave Livinggood, to come to our April 25 meeting to review in greater detail this budget with us because the JOC really isn't a board, it's an operating committee. And as such, there's three board members from each of the sending schools and their job is to represent their boards to the Western Center in terms of budget approval. So I'd really like this board to have a discussion with this budget with with Dave Livinggood at our next meeting so that Chuck and Patty and I can get a sense of where everyone here stands because what what the Western Center is presenting is four different scenarios for a budget. So there's choices to be made in terms of that. So it's not a singular budget that I'm presenting tonight. You can see from page one of the handout, there's an overview of the four scenarios that Mr. Livinggood presented. Scenario one is basically status quo, budget remains the same with an increase for supplies and materials. Scenario two is the status quo budget with an addition of $50,000 for safety upgrades for the center. Scenario three is the status quo budget, not including safety and security, but adding an assistant principal position to the Western Center. And then scenario four is the status quo budget, adding both the security addition as well as the assistant principal position. So the question becomes at what cost to the districts? And if you go to page two, there's a cost breakdown there for each of the districts. You can see each of the scenarios there are listed in each of the four columns. And if you look at scenario one, total increase is 4.56% of last of current year budget for the Western Center with a total increase of 294,909. And now you can see Potts Grove's increase there, which is the top line, 0.3% increase or it'd be an increase in dollars of 4,899. You can see those same figures for scenario two with the safety, which would be $50,000 additional, total of 5.33% increase would mean a 1.04% increase for Potts Grove or a dollar amount of 16,866. Scenario three is the addition of the assistant principal and overall 8.07% increase over this year's budget, dollar increase of 522,012 for Potts Grove. That would mean a 3.67% increase or, as you can see, 59,289. And then lastly, scenario four is a 1 plus 2 plus 3, a total increase of 8.84%, 572,012 for Potts Grove. That means 4.41% increase over our current contribution to the Western Center or a dollar amount of 71,266. Now you can see that Potts Grove's amount is smaller than the other two districts. So both Springford and Upper Perky Omen will also be meeting around this and their dollar amounts look much larger than ours, which you can see there on the paper. There is a formula used for the dollar amounts, which is called ADM, or it stands for average daily membership of how many students does each of the three sending districts send to the JOC? That ADM breakdown is on the third and final page of this handout. And actually, the calculation is a five-year average of students that are sent there. So you can see on this page, the average, the percent of membership that each district has that they're sending there, Potts Grove's, we're averaging 71 students with percent share then would be 23.95. You see Springford at 39.19 and Upper Perk at 36.86. So you see higher percentages, but it's also lower budget amounts when you contrast that with with the Potts Grove budget. That's about all I have to say on budget, which is the first item unless any of you folks have questions. I'd like you to look at these. We really should debate in public, which is why I'm saying we must debate in public, which is why I'm asking, recommending that Dave be here next month so you can ask particular questions. And I very much would like for both Chuck, Patty, and I to get a sense of where the nine of us stand so that we can fairly represent that when we go back. The next JOC meeting is on May 6th. So if we do this April 25, it gives us time prior to the May 6 meeting to go back and represent a full board sense of where your favors are with this budget. Questions on that?
I apologize, I'm a bit late. I was reading the room. In any case, do they have kind of like an audit report such as what we get each year?
Yes.
Is there a way that do the sending districts have the opportunity to read through that in any capacity?
Tina, I will call Dave tomorrow and see if we can get a copy of the audit report. Does that make sense?
That'd be great.
I have a copy.
Oh, terrific.
I'll send it out.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Deb. And if you don't let me know or if you want to go ahead in contact, that makes it easier for me. All right.
Thank you.
I'll send it out to the board.
Thanks.
The next two agenda items from last night's meeting then kind of fall under this title of keeping the Western Center up to date with current technology. So the first, the second agenda item really was the Western Center is using grant money to purchase a hybrid van for two reasons. One, the students in the automotive technology program don't have hybrid technology to work with. So they can learn it from books, but there's no hands-on. So purchasing a van would give hybrid technology, would give the automotive students a hybrid car that they can do hands-on work with in terms of there. It would also give the Western Center a smaller transportation vehicle that as they're going to conferences, they could work with students in doing that. So they're kind of excited that they would at least be bringing in. They're not there with electric technology, full electric, but at least they're moving to hybrid. Likewise, we the Western Center has a partnership with Hunter Engineering Company. And the trade-off is that Hunter is giving us up-to-date equipment if we allow them to use the Western Center to do training for for their distributors in terms of that in the evening hours that they stock us. They have already given us a lot of good equipment. They are, we are adding additional equipment to the tune of 338,570 and 76 cents, which includes an ADAS, which stands for Advanced Driver Assistance Systems and Wheel Alignment Systems, Wheel Balancers, and Tire Changers. Those are coming at no cost to the center, but it shows, I think, the value that you can get there from a partnership with bringing this stuff in so that the students who are going there are working on most current stuff in return for allowing Hunter to use the center to train their distributors on the equipment and things like that. Next, the principal of the Western Center, Craig Robinson, presented enrollment data for next year. This is interesting. Total applications are up 7% from current year, went from 360 to 386. The largest group there is eighth grade applications are up 18% from current year, from 219 to 258. Specific to Potts Grove, our total applications are down from current year, down 3% from 118 to 114. But Dr. Finney and his staff's group has been the focus has been eighth grade students, which would be ninth graders going in there. Potts Grove has increased applications from eighth graders by 20%. They are up from 65 and going up to 78. The largest area of applicants is cosmetology. It's huge. It's remained that way for a lot of years. So you can kind of, someone once said you can rejoice because thorn bushes have roses or you can complain because rose bushes have thorns. So applications are up, but here's the problem. The anticipation is that at least 100 of those total applications of the 386 will be turned down because there's not enough space. So the largest program that the Western Center is still grappling with is how can you grow space and still control budgets in terms of that with what's there? And there is no answer right now in what they want to do. They're looking into that. So there's a lot of people that get really excited, say our applications are up. I'm one of the, I don't know if it's a naysayer or a doomsday kind of person, say, well, it's nice that they're up, but if you're turning down 100, what does that mean? You're raising frustration. So then you have superintendents who take this very seriously and increase their applications by 20% so that you can tell more kids they can't go? So we really need, I think, in the future, need to find a solution of what to do about that. Technical education seems to be increasing for the next several years. There were some award winners announced last night for three different conferences. The reason I share that here is I think it is an indicator for the quality of education and the quality of learning that goes on when you have students coming out winning awards. In March 13 to 15, there was a Health Occupation and Students of America Leadership Conference, also called HOSHA. There were eight award winners, a state historian, an Aspire Scholarship, which I believe was $7,500, two gold awards, and four bronze medals. Two of the eight winners were from Potts Grove who were there. So Marley Flannery, who is in 11th grade, got a gold award in interviewing skills. And Corey Herb Sled, 12th grader, a gold award for life support skills. So our students are there. There was also March 18 to 20, a FCC LA conference, which is a Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Conference. Four award winners, unfortunately, none from Potts Grove, but still it shows that the Western Center is producing kids that are doing things or getting awards. Also a conference, April 3 to 5, Skills USA Competition, three award winners. Again, sadly, none from Potts Grove. But I also, I just mentioned that because I think it is an indicator of the quality of learning that's going on at the center. Next to last, the students of the, the Western Center does Students of the Quarter each quarter, which is interesting because it fits the title. But they just did the Students of the Quarter for the third quarter. Forty-eight students were named as Students of the Quarter. 10 of the 48 were from Potts Grove, which is, which is nice to hear. I do want to take the time to read their names in case somebody's listening and knows the kids, and I think it's worth saying the names of our Potts Grove students. James Vergara, a 10th grader in carpentry, Student of the Quarter. Harlow Maresa, 10th grader in cosmetology. Kelsey Widener, an 11th grader, also in cosmetology. Avery Huber, a 12th grader in cosmetology. Teresa Spicer, 10th grader in culinary arts. Benjamin Kennedy, a 12th grader in culinary arts. Robert, Robert, excuse me, Robert Eckenrode, a 9th grader, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. Anika Bao, 9th grader, introduction to medical careers. Joseph Touchton, I don't have his grade here, I apologize for that, in precision machining. And Gabe Fuentis, I also don't have the grade in sports medicine. So just if folks are listening, you know those kids, give them a congratulations. It's nice to see that students from Potts Grove are being selected as Students of the Quarter. Lastly, there are two upcoming dates. April 11th is the Ultimate Greek Feast. Seats may still be available for the 4:30 seating if the public is interested in that. The Potts Grove board members, as well as the board members from the other two sending schools, have been invited to the 6 o'clock seating also, which is a part of the co-op banquet that's going on there. So you'll get to learn if you have chosen to go. I think we gave you those RSVPs, the invitations. If you go, you'll learn a little bit about the co-op program at the Western Center and also have the opportunity to have some really good Greek food. Last date I mentioned already, the next JOC meeting is on May 6 at 7 o'clock. Chuck is a member of the JOC. Anything you want to add? Unfortunately, I don't think you're on the call.
I wasn't on the call. I had technical difficulties. But just one comment, there are two enrollments that there's that they can't eat around that are really independent variables. One is a roll figure that you can have at the Western Center, which is the 200 or some students. And each discipline has its own capacity. So for instance, in electricians, I think there's a capacity point that they have. Wiring work, that's their capacity. They can't add any more. So balancing it, the Western Center and VOTEC training has is to balance the number of slots with the projected enrollment. And that's a much more tricky discipline than you have, we have. If you're in high school, you're in high school. And maybe a, maybe an elective class might be filled and might not be filled, but the question of what you're going to enroll in, in a VOTEC program, is much more restrictive than the question of enrolling in VOTEC. So I hate to phrase it that way because I know people don't like the term VOTEC. But that's the problem that Western is facing. And it's projecting, you know, how many students, how many students would we want if they wanted to start a program in theater arts? You know, and you'd have to set a cap for that program. So anyway, that's part of what Jay's problem is.
Thanks, Chuck. So again, to review, April 25, I don't know if I need to take any action to invite Dave to come in to present?
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
You can take care of it? And the other piece of that, I've asked Tina to keep record of people's recommendations during that meeting. Unfortunately, I won't be there. My wife and I are traveling to North Carolina that week to spend a week with some very old friends of ours from high school who have a bed and breakfast there and also to pick up a new puppy in Johnson City, Tennessee, which is from a song. So rather than, I could join by Zoom, but I'm just choosing to spend the time with our friends. So because I won't be there, Chuck will be here who's there, Patty hopefully will be there. But Tina is going to be collecting the sense of the board's feeling around this budget after you hear Dave's presentation so that Chuck and Patty and I can fairly represent us back to the JOC at the May meeting. Makes sense? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah. So I keep on hearing about lack of space, that we need more, we need more space. I've been hearing that for at least a year, two years. Are we ever going to get presented with a plan to try to remedy that? I just keep on hearing, well, there's not enough room, there's not enough room. Well, then tell us what we need to do to make more room.
I don't have a date to give you, Ashley. The best I can tell you is I'm pressing on that and the answer I keep getting back as we're working on it. At last night's meeting, I was told that that's an issue for next year. And I said, I think it's an issue that we need to deal with now. So it is trying to get, and I understand what you're saying, it's been going on for several years. If anyone has any ideas of how to add inertia to that or make it move faster, I'm very open to hearing that and more than willing to represent it. I've been doing that at each of the meetings. I think Chuck has done done the same, but we need to get somebody moving to put a plan together to make that happen and to figure out what's what's that cost. Chuck, you look like you're going to add something to that or you were thinking?
No.
And Ash, I understand that's a, it's an evasive kind of answer, but it's the best I can give you right now.
You have a future in politics. The budget figures that.
Who, Ashley or me?
You. The budget figures, are they already taken into account in our budgeting process or do we have to wait until they, until it's decided?
It's like the state budget, I think.
Ah.
Just a guess.
Deb, can you speak to what budget number we put in for the Western Center in this budget? While she's looking that up, so to. While she's looking that up, so to Ashley's point and to Jay's point, and frankly, to my frustration, like, I have been encouraging, and we, more kids to apply, and we've, Dr. Gonzalez has changed the process, and we have gotten more interest at the eighth-grade So I think it would be fair that we, when we invite Mr. Livinggood to talk about the projections, to be, well, not to beat a bump, just to share with him, share with him how important it is for, for them to consider ways that we can increase the number of students that are getting in without, without expanding necessarily the footprint. Are there, are there ways to use the same footprint in a different way to get more kids successfully placed? Or if we do have to expand the footprint, what does that look like? These are, I think, fair questions, and I think he would be prepared and excited to speak to those. So I think that would be something that, hearing it from all of you, how important it is for us, I think would be important and would communicate that to him, and he could take that back to his team, and maybe we can get some, a breakthrough in some progress. Does that sound fair?
Yeah. Are the other districts experiencing the same lopsided growth?
The document that was shared with us, I was actually on the JOC call last night, Springfield had a pretty big jump in number of people as well, number of kids applying. So I think the, the critical number, because I think they really are prioritizing eighth graders. They want, they want completers. So it's much more difficult to go in as a 10th grader and actually qualify as a completer of the program. So I think the most important thing, and again, a question we can ask Mr. Livinggood to explain, he's more expert in it than I am, but looking at the eighth-grade numbers, Springfield, I believe, had a very significant increase as well.
Springfield went from 84 students total this year, applications for last year went in this year, to 120 currently. If you look at that for eighth grade, it went from 53 to 89. Upper Perk total, last, last round was 145. They are actually down to 138, although when you look at eighth grade, or their eighth grade is also down, went from 96, 23, 24, to 86 in 24, 25. So slightly different profiles you see with the two. If I remember correctly, someone asked a question about how do we stand with budget in relation to Potts Grove budget? My understanding is we're behind, or, we, who's we? The Western Center budget process is behind the Potts Grove budget process, and perhaps Springfield and Upper Perk too, although I can't speak for them, which is why I'm trying to press to get Dave in here, what that means for our contribution and how we do that. I don't know if there's anything you can speak to there, or Deb, can?
So you passed a budget tonight with, that included our budgeted contribution to the Western Center. If there's any altercation, if that's altered in any way by one of these scenarios, then we would, we still, we passed a proposed final, so it still has to sit for 30 days before we actually vote on it as final. So the board, and Mr. Zubers, you can jump in too, the board could change, change our budget based on the numbers provided by the Western Center, or we could, there's a number of different ways. We can pull money out of fund balance. I'll leave it to you two.
The proposed final budget is subject to change until it's finally adopted. So you can change anything in the budget. And as far as that, the effect on tax rate, you could, you know, use some fund balance for that increase to the VOTEC budget if you desire to do that.
Yeah, the initial information we got from the Western Center, as you can see, there are different scenarios. It was only like a five, like $4,900 increase. So it is flat in our budget. Their budget is flat with no increase. And I did send you, that's what I was doing, I did send everybody a copy of their financials, so I sent it to the board and I copied you, Dr. Finnerty, on it.
So in the four scenarios, we, our budget, the budget that you passed tonight is scenario one.
And the budget I have prepared for public view because it has to sit. So it is in PDE's website, and I printed it out. The only change is, the only error message I get when I do it, because when you go through and do stuff on PDE's website, you'll get error messages. The only error message I got is that the, the Property Tax Reduction Act doesn't equal the state. And that's because the state has zero in there, and I have it in it flat. The state hasn't established a property tax reduction act amount yet and will not do so until like the middle of May. But it's in there as flat, and that's for what, you know, we're going to present to in this preliminary. It has no effect on our budget whatsoever because the only thing that happens with that Property State Reduction Act is we get it from the state, and we turn around and we reduce the amount that our taxpayers pay based upon Homestead and Farmstead allocations that we give to them, the reduction.
I know there were some dollars that typically the Western Center will return to the three districts. I know Mr. Livinggood was requesting use of those funds for capital projects that he's finding himself in need of. Has that worked into our budget at all? Or did, did you leave those dollars out in the event that we would choose to allow him to retain those dollars?
Those monies are estimated, kind of in an estimate. There's, there's two buckets of miscellaneous revenues that we receive. One is basically miscellaneous. We get money for student parking, tech fees, you know, AP exams, those types of things. Those are all considered like miscellaneous also, which is included in the budget is prior period revenues that get refunded to us. So it's kind of incorporated into an average of what we would get back. I mean, that's, those numbers are hard to estimate, but, because they fluctuate from year to year. I would suggest, my suggestion would be, if they refund the 71 to us and we would approve the 71, then we would just use fund balance, because it would go into fund balance one year and come out.
You totally read my question. And then I was, I was waiting for you, Dr. Finnerty, I'm sorry. Thank you very mu, again, all my questions that you answer, I appreciate it. Does anyone have any other questions or comments?
I just have one more thing. I think the two students you missed were Joseph Touchton and Gabe Fuentes. They're both juniors, both in 11th grade.
Thank you. And congratulations to our Students of the Quarter. Well done. Okay, we're moving on to our committee items, 15.1.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Operations Facilities Committee meeting minutes for March 12, 2024, as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve 15.1. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, 15.2.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Athletics Co-Curricular Community Relations meeting minutes, March 19, 2024, as submitted. That was a lot of Ms. That was a lot of Ms. in the row there.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve 15.2. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Moving to 15.3.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee meeting minutes for March 19, 2024, as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the CIT meeting minutes. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to Report of the Policy Committee.
Well, we already kind of went over a couple of the policies. We did have some old business policy, 903, which is comments in board meetings. That's out for 30-day review. Trauma-informed approaches. I learned a lot during that part of the meeting. That's also in 30-day review. Student expression and dissemination of materials. That's, worse, it is out for 30-day review, but I expect that, I think this one's going to probably generate a little excitement. The whole First Amendment pesky thing. And that's it. Yeah. It was a 23-minute meeting.
Sweet.
Yes, I was loving it.
Thank you. And I also want to take a moment to thank Dr. Lucas for the extraordinary amount of time she spends working through the policies. It's another situation where thanks is not enough, but it is greatly appreciated. So thank you to Dr. Lucas. We're at new business. Dr. Finnerty?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Jay?
Nothing, thanks.
Anik?
Nothing, thank you.
Tanya?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Getting good at this button, on off, on off. Dr. Nippert?
Yes.
Okay. Jim?
Bill?
No.
Ashley? Mr. Zuber? No. I love to do that, so. One day, we're going to get his new business. How's school going?
Well, I wish I had like exciting news for you guys this week, but I actually haven't decided on college, so I don't have any news. I'll have it by next meeting. I have to have it by next meeting because I have to decide by May 1, which is kind of scary, but I want to figure it out. I have an idea, I have an idea, but I don't have everything solidified. But other than that, school is, I think I have 52 days, like not school days, but 52 days left, which is like kind of scary. It's bittersweet because like I want to, at the same time, I kind of want to leave, but like, I don't know, I don't know. It's been a long 13 years, okay? But at the same time, I'm going to miss it so much. Everything's new to me, and I don't really like change, so I'm kind of scared for that part. But I'm excited for the end of the year and just, you know, making it through if I can ever, if I can manage to do that without like self-combusting, so, you know. Hopefully, we get to a point, hopefully, I have some exciting news for you guys next board meeting. The last, my last board meeting ever, which is crazy. Yes, I know, I know. It's been a long, it's been a short, fast two years. That actually has gone faster, I think, the two years. That's crazy. I remember when I, I remember when I was a sophomore, and everything seemed so scary. And at my first board meeting, I was like terrified. I didn't know how to, I still really don't know what I'm doing. But I remember, I remember I was terrified that people were going to like see me and like talk about it after talking, which sometimes they do, but, and they're like, Emily, what are you talking about? You just keep talking. Yeah. Well, anyone who knows me knows that this is a good scenario for me because I like to talk. I get to just talk. Really? Nobody knew that? Oh, my gosh. So I got to find you guys a board rep that will talk to you. But don't worry, because I, you know, hopefully, they have a good board rep coming in. But I'm kind of sad for my last meeting, but, you know, it's okay. I enjoyed my time. It was really fun to serve the board, but we'll talk about the next meeting because we're going to be all sad right now.
Do you have no laptop?
Yeah, I have the laptop. So PSA for a laptop.
I have AP tests to look forward to, which is very fun, very excited about that. Junioritis is a thing, man. Senioritis, you get to be, yes, it is, because, see, like you get to look forward to graduation, and I still have a whole year left, but it's fine. School's good, it just feels like all like, like everything's wrapping up very quickly, which is kind of how it feels like. And yeah, I'm happy for you. It's been fun serving with you. And yeah.
Happy for me, too.
Speaking of that, so we did receive three applications for our new student rep, three. That's it. So...
Was it last year?
I think it was three or four.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll be conducting interviews after our policy meeting before our board meeting. So in that gap, we'll be doing our, our interviews for our, for the new student rep.
No, no, it is in April or May?
April, yeah. Yeah.
As always, I appreciate your reports out, and I love this time when we get to ask you how school's going because for the millionth time, my kids are old now, I don't get to ask that question, so it fills that need. It's very selfish on my part, but I really appreciate that you have always been so willing to share, and it is, again, just personally speaking, my favorite part of, of coming to the board meetings is to hear how school's going for each of you. So thank you for sharing. Does anybody have any, any other questions, comments, new business you might have thought of in between? No?
I'm in grade.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I'm going to be excited to hear about which college you chose.
Do you have options? No.
Can we help in the decision?
No spoiler alerts. Do you want to share it with the class?
Okay, I'll give you, give us two options.
Okay, there's five options, but there's not really five options. I'm sure someone's going to tell me this tomorrow at school now. But we're not going over all five, because all five, we can give two. So my top two, I'll give you my top two. So it's either Westchester or University of Delaware. So we'll decide. Well, I know, two really, two really big different options. My other three, actually, there's three, or Rutgers, or Rutgers. So there's those three, but...
There's four.
There is a fourth, but I'm not really, there is a fourth, but I'm not actually going to the fourth one. I was just like for fun, kind of. But those are the three. So we'll, we'll have to figure that stuff out today, this weekend and in the next coming weeks, so, yeah.
Enjoy the process, Emily. Okay, with that, we need a motion to adjourn. Oh, public comment, my goodness. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to make public comment? Thank you for, for that. Is there anyone online for public comment?
There can't be.
Okay.
Let me check, let me, let me just quick check the...
Double checking.
The email address.
Mr. Zubers, thank you for saving me.
Nope, no one.
Okay. Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Thank you. (end of transcript)